Regular meeting number 37 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Page, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Pastor Goff from the North Linden Baptist Church to come forward and offer prayer. It's good to see you again Pastor. Looks right here.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this glorious day. As we have opportunity to come together in love and harmony, we give you praise and thanksgiving for your guidance as we look to you from which cometh our help. We thank you, Lord, for helping us to communicate and have understanding. And as you open up our hearts and our minds and as we look to you and share wisdom, we thank you, Lord, for giving us the vision to see what needs to be done. And as we join in with you and your activity as you do your work, we give you praise and thanksgiving for using us as your vessels. We give you all praise, Lord, for we know that you are an awesome God. And we thank you, Lord, for the leadership that is here and all those that are in said positions. We know, Lord, it's not by accident, but by your will and your design. As we move forward in your grace, we thank you, Lord, for being there for us and as we cry out with our petitions, as we cry out with our needs, as we cry out, we thank you, Lord, for meeting us where we're at and supplying our every need. We know, Lord, that you are the one who's able to make the difference and we thank you. We give you all praise. We give you all thanksgiving for the way that you are looking in upon us and helping us to do the business of today and as we progress into the future. Always praising you and thanking you for all that you do. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Goff. Recognize Reverend Ashay in the back. Reverend, welcome to council. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office, they're listed on the agenda, will be published in the City Bulletin. Clerk, are there any other communications to be read in the record?
Not at this time.
How about resolutions from members of council, starting with Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, Councilmember Mitch Brown, Councilmember Harden, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Stenziano, President Protem Tyson?
No, I don't have any resolutions, but I do have a couple of announcements. The first one, I just want to recognize Councilmember Page and certainly by attending the ABC Jobs Boot Camp and Job Fair at the Workforce Development on the campus of Columbus State, there were about 18 employers there. And certainly want to recognize the Department of Human Resources, especially our Training Division for being there and providing resources to different types of seminars to the individuals who are at the boot camp. I also just want to share some places where we're going to have some produce markets this week in the city of Columbus. And certainly these produce markets are ones that, again, we help refund produce markets out of our health and human services. And so just the Unity Temple Church of God in Christ on Reeve Avenue, this is Saturday at 12 o'clock. They have Neighborhood Services, Inc. on North Fourth Street, which will be Tuesdays at 3:00. The Native American Indian Center, which is Thursday at 10:00. Love Zion Baptist Church, Saturday at 12:00. Holton Recreation Center, which is on Eureka Avenue, is Thursdays at 2:00. Glenwood Recreation Center, Thursdays at 4:00. And Faith Ministries on Saturdays at 1:00. So just want to make sure that people know that this is free produce for your families. And please come out and get and receive healthy, affordable, because it's free, and local food. Thank you.
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. I do have one announcement as well, and it's the Fourth Annual Columbus Takeover School Supply Drive for folks and children that need school supplies. It's going to be August 19th, 2017, 1836 Lockborn Road, the corner of Lockborn and Smith Road, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. Again, it's a school supply drive for all the kids that need school supplies. Drop off locations on the west side are the Crossroad World Outreach Ministry on Cypress Avenue, and then the hub on Main Street. East side is the warehouse on 4555 Groves Road and Restore Hope Outreach Ministry on Sibley. So that's, again, if you're in the need for school supplies for this upcoming school year, August 19th, there will be a takeover school supply drive from 2:00 to 7:00 at 1836 Lockborn Road, which is in the corner of Lockborn and Smith. How about comments from our city auditor, treasurer's office, city attorney's office? I don't see anyone from the municipal court here. Seeing none. At this time, I request that the following ordinances, clerk, that's 1673, 2017, in education, 1901, 2017, in public service and transportation, be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda. Do my colleagues have any other requests for removal of an ordinance from the consent action besides those two? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive second reading, I'm sorry, waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Clerk Blevins, will you now read the ordinance numbers of each of our 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading? Enter the record.
Finance Committee ordinances, 1570, 1630, 1685, 1751, 1798, 1808, 1816, and 1819-2017. Economic Development Committee ordinances, 1815 and 1822-2017. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 189X-2017. Ordinances, 1813, 1867, and 1882-2017. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance, 1658-2017. Technology Committee ordinance, 1427-2017. Public Utilities Committee Resolution 188X-2017. And ordinances, 1590, 1646, 1743, 1747, 1748, 1749, 1767, and 1802-2017. Zoning Committee ordinances, 1719, 1842, 1858, and 1888-2017.
Thank you, clerk. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Clerk, please read the ordinance numbers of each into the record.
Finance Committee ordinance, 1468, 1482, 1626, 1671, 1672, 1678, 1679-2017. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance, 1796-2017. Economic Development Committee ordinance, 1744-2017. Administration Committee ordinance, 1583-2017. Public Safety Committee ordinances, 1691, 1724, 1726, 1770-2017. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolutions 172X, 182X-2017. And ordinances, 1632, 1715, 1720, 1758, 1765, 1776, 1803, 1804, 1866-2017. Small and Minority Business Development Committee ordinance, 1741-2017. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinances, 1544, 1558, 1754, 1857-2017. Housing Committee ordinances, 1844, 1849, 1876, 1877, 1878, and 1879-2017. Technology Committee ordinances, 1277, 1424, 1657, 1730, and 1750-2017. Public Utilities Committee ordinances, 1335, 1435, 1499, 1512, 1513, 1515, 1537, 1547, 1591, 1635, 1636, 1637, 1641, 1659, 1683, 1725-2017. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0112, 115, 116, 117, 118, 119, 120, 121, and 122-2017.
Thank you, clerk. We do have one consent speaker, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. It looks like you're speaking against 117-2017. I'm not sure which committee that's in. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. I'm sorry. Oh, it's an appointment from the mayor's office. I see A117-17, okay, it's on the appointments.
First row, 1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman of solely vacant property in North Linden area. The only reason why I'm against this, multiple times I had asked the area commission for me to set up there. And the reason why, because I had the best interest in this community. I have asked multiple times to set up there, and other people had come to me, "Why don't you set up there on the area commission?" I'm against this for three reasons and only if people that sit up there on the North Linden or any area commission needs to come down here and to represent. I'm not an area commission, but I care dearly for the neighborhood and other areas of town. And I just don't really understand, if you pointed these people to come down here to sit in these seats, they never come down here. But mind you, Ms. Jennifer has done a good job. But, and again, it baffles me so bad that we have these area commissions that serve time after time again. I do remember when I first moved in my house on Arlington Avenue, there was an old gentleman by the name of Dick Corn or Danny Pop at the time. And, you know, I took the best interest and wanted to set up there many years ago, and I still cannot get this opportunity. You know, if these people have to serve in these seats for five years, let's shorten up the time for two years to give somebody else the annual opportunity. Mind you, I have city council that came out, walked the area with me, and other people from this body of council. And I would love to see something shorten up the time with area commissions to not serve no more than two to two years and a half. If these seats is always empty, let's get somebody that has the best interest in this community. You know, you can point somebody, but will they sit right there? I don't think so, because they don't have, I have ample amount of time to come here to express my concerns to you. My concerns, I'm really against this, because these people does not come down here. But I will speak very highly of Ms. Jennifer, that she gave me the title of the vacant abandonment chairman or solely for North Linden area. But these other people, I don't, you know, I just don't know. But again, I would like to see something to be shortened up the time to give somebody else the opportunity that lives in this community, that has the best interests, interests, you know, for its safety and other things in this community. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Wilkins, have you, maybe I should ask Director Shoney and someone from development to allow or let Mr. Wilkins know when the elections for the area commissions take place in the Linden area?
Council President Klein, thank you for the opportunity. Actually, with the creation of the Neighborhoods Department, that's Director Carla William Scott now.
Apologies, Director Shoney.
That oversees the area commissions.
Director William Scott, same question.
We will, we will reach out to Mr. Wilkins and let him know when the area commission elections are for his area.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion for approval of the consent action? Clerk call the roll by please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes, with the exception of 1754-2017, on which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page? Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Yes, consent action carries with a notable exception. We will now go to the second reading of 30-day table on emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee, is chaired by the President Protem. President Protem, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. The only ordinance I have in finance this evening is ordinance number 1785-2017, is to amend the 2017 capital improvements budget to be in line with the upcoming bond sale and to declare an emergency. This alignment is needed authority by project, with the funds issued in the proposed 2017 bond sale for each of the departments and divisions. Director Lombardi, do you have any comments you want to make?
Thank you, President Klein, President Protem Tyson, and other members of council. Yeah, this is a yearly ordinance that we do right before the bond sale to make sure that all the projects are aligned, from projects maybe where money was used and other projects. This is to help align those projects, get the funding back, to make sure it's in line with the bond sale.
And the bond sale is scheduled for this fall. Is that correct, Auditor Ryan? Thank you. All right, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Now I'd like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you, the ordinance is 1687-2017, to authorize and direct Columbus Public Health to enter into a contract with Foundations Worldwide, Inc. for baby changing stations, to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize a distribution at no charge to eligible individuals and businesses in the city of Columbus for installation, and to authorize the appropriation of $25,000 and the expenditure of $10,000 on the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund. And I would now like to ask my council colleague, Council Michael Stenziano, who is putting and supporting this with his funds. And so Councilwoman Stenziano, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Protem. Just want to thank my colleagues. This ordinance is to help members of our community. Had a constituent reach out and express some frustration that when he had an incident with his daughter, went to the men's restroom and didn't have a changing station, and had approached me about maybe updating our code to require it and looking at what best practices were and to kind of move the process along. This was the proposal that we brought forward. This is a grant that's in partnership with Foundations, who is going to be giving the city a wonderful discount so we can get as many changing stations and provide equal access as best we can throughout the city. It was a long process. Appreciate all the different departments that were involved, including a commitment from the Department of Recreation and Parks, that we'll be updating all of our recreation facilities as well. Do want to thank President Protem Tyson for her leadership and guidance through the Health and Human Services Committee, also Edward Johnson, Andrew Dyer, Matt Erickson from the Legislative Research Office, and my staff, Stephanie Magus and Kevin McCain, who had to put up with my many, many questions on how we could do this, get it done. Tonight, we're going to be authorizing the initial $10,000, but up to $25,000, as we have interest from members of the community, small businesses, or restaurants in particular have shown great interest in using this grant program to add more value to their values and what they would like to see. But as we, I think, all appreciate small businesses, every dollar is important, and to be able to stretch that out, this is a real partnership, not only responding to members of our community, but that business community to get that done. So once we vote, this will be made, an application available online later this month. And do want to thank the Department of Technology and Tom Diamond, who also helped put together the program and the language. And those small businesses and organizations interested can visit www.columbus.gov/changingstation to apply. I would happily answer any questions, but will return it to the chair of the committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman Stenziano, and just thank you for your leadership and hearing a need from a resident community and taking that need and turning it into action. And certainly your continued focus on family, so thank you for the work that you're doing for, especially our young families. And so with that, I would move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And now I have ordinance 1781-2017. And so the next two ordinances that I'm going to read are ordinances that are really focused on work that I have been focused on as Chair of Health and Human Services. And the first will be on Tobacco 21, and the other will be on the food plan. And so the first ordinance, again, is 1781-2017, to authorize and direct the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Beyond Spots and Dots for professional media and advertising services, to authorize the expenditure of $30,000 from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund for said contract, and to declare an emergency. The Tobacco 21, or what's called T21 program, focuses on educating community members, as well as other vendors and retailers who sell tobacco products according to the citywide Tobacco 21 law. The educational messaging for the community members specifically targets 15-25-year-olds who may buy vape, tobacco, and hookah products and paraphernalia. This program utilizes media and advertising strategy, which will include billboards, bench ads, social media, including advertising on Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, to increase community and vendor awareness and the understanding of the law. This legislation is also important because we want to do everything in our power to reduce approximately 90% of new smokers from even starting the dangerous addictive habit in their lives. So there are no questions or comments. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And the last ordinance I have in my committee is ordinance 1835-2017. I'm going to ask Cheryl Graffanino to start working towards the podium. And Cheryl is our manager for our food, local food action plan in Columbus Public Health. And this legislation is to authorize city council to enter into a contract with advocacy and communication solutions in support of the local food action plan, and to authorize an appropriation and expenditure of $19,000 within the neighborhood initiative sub-fund, and to declare an emergency. Cheryl, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Protem Tyson, Council President Klein, and members of council. Since the adoption of the City of Columbus Franklin County Local Food Action Plan by this council in November of 2016, and with support from Council President Protem Tyson, we've worked to develop an innovative infrastructure to ensure forward movement and successful implementation of the four goals and 27 actions of the Local Food Action Plan. Both Columbus Public Health and Franklin County Economic Development and Planning are adding staff resources to increase the capacity of the Franklin County Local Food Council, which is our community-facing arm of the implementation, and to create a joint city-county local food team, which represents local government in our implementation plan. The newly formed Local Food Board, a group of 12 community leaders and decision-makers who will help guide the implementation and marshal community resources to achieve success, held their first meeting on June 14th. This three-tiered approach is a pioneering way to address local food system efforts in our community. And like the unique county and city partnership employed to create the plan, it has garnered attention from our residents and from other communities across the country who want to know more. Our local food system team at Columbus Public Health will work diligently with this contractor to support communications and education strategies around the goals of the plan, so we can create accurate, relevant, and timely communication schedules, related strategies, and content, including things like letters to the editor, op-ed pieces, social media, traditional print media, and journals at a national level. We look forward to helping to form this content that helps inform our local, regional, state, and national communities about the Local Food Action Plan, why it's critical to our community, and why people should care and get involved. As always, I would like to thank Council President Protem Tyson and Columbus City Council for support of this project. Our research regarding food plans across the country demonstrates that support from local government leaders is critical to the successful implementation of the types of goals and strategies outlined in this plan. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Cheryl. And we look forward to all the great work that you're doing and being able to communicate that to all the different levels as you just mentioned. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. By voice vote. Excuse me, I'm sorry, because I forget, I need a little bit. Councilmember, clerk call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
President Klein? President Protem Tyson?
Yes. Legislation is passed. Thank you.
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. The next committee is Economic Development, chaired by Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Chair Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Economic Development, we first have ordinance 1602-2017, to authorize the director of the Department of Development to enter into an economic development agreement with White Castle Management Company and W.C. Goodell LLC concerning the redevelopment of approximately 15 acres of real property located at 555 West Goodell Street, and to declare an emergency. This agreement reflects the company's investment of $65 million in private dollars, including approximately $2 million for public street improvements at 555 West Goodell, the current location of White Castle's corporate office. The investments will result in the construction of approximately 150,000 square feet of Class A office space, including the ongoing presence of the White Castle offices, as well as the construction of 300 multifamily housing units. This agreement outlines the plans and certain commitments of both parties relating to this project. It is being submitted as an emergency so that work can begin on the project by the end of this month. Director Shoney, do you have any additional comments to provide, especially if you can talk a little bit about your team's work to retain the corporate office and some of that process with the company?
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Klein, members of council. We're very excited about this project. It's an opportunity to retain one of the marquee companies in this city and at its current location. The White Castle Company and the Ingram family approached us, wow, it's been over a year ago, I think, to talk about the project. They went through a process to select a developer. They've been working with the Alfred Company for about that period of time to develop a plan for the site. Their offices are obsolete. They need new offices. They need to either move or rebuild their space. And so they have been working with us to satisfy their needs in terms of their financial obligations to the company, to make it a viable project for that site. They had other options. They have other options around the region, but they are choosing to stay there and redevelop what is a brownfield site. One of the other things that we're excited about is taking what has traditionally been an old manufacturing facility where they, for many years, were plating porcelain on steel for those iconic buildings. They aren't doing that anymore. The company sold that business, and they want to redevelop it as a modern office campus and make it a real symbol of their commitment to our community. and make it a real symbol of their commitment to our community.
Thank you. Any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Not on that one. I have 1663. Okay, thank you, President Klein. Next, we have ordinance 1624-2017, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Meritex Enterprises Incorporated, doing business as Meritex Columbus LLC, for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years on real property improvements, in consideration of a proposed capital investment of approximately $10,346,000 in new construction. Meritex Enterprises is a real estate investment and management company that acquires, develops, owns, and operates commercial, primarily industrial, properties. Meritex has been a significant owner of industrial space in Columbus since 2000. They plan to expand their portfolio by constructing a new 250,000-square-foot facility on the south side near Rickenbacker. In addition to the planned relocation of a number of positions to the new facility, this tax abatement is being granted in consideration of more than $10 million in private investment, as well as the creation of 22 new full-time positions with an estimated hourly salary between $19.23 and $28.85. Columbus City Schools will receive an additional $566,860 in property tax revenue over the term of this agreement due to the construction of the new facility, with that amount increasing substantially at the conclusion of this agreement. Any questions from my colleagues, or anything from the Director?
Madam Chair, President Klein, thanks for the opportunity. This is a speculative warehouse building project. These projects are extremely cost competitive, and so I'd just like to thank you for your support on this.
Seeing no questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. Next, we have ordinance 1663-2017, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with FI Industries Incorporated and Franklin International Incorporated for a property tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years, in consideration of a proposed total investment of approximately $3,369,800, of which approximately $2,227,000 will be related to the construction of new commercial laboratory space, the retention of 335 full-time permanent positions, and the creation of five net-new full-time permanent positions. Franklin International has been manufacturing adhesives and sealants since they were founded. They are proposing to develop a new 12,300-square-foot polymer research and development center on their industrial campus in South Columbus. This tax abatement is being granted in consideration of the private investment of more than $3.3 million in the construction of the new facility, as well as the creation of five new full-time permanent positions anticipated to make between $24 and $33 hourly. We do have one speaker in opposition to this ordinance, Mr. Joe Motil. Mr. Motil, you know the drill, but a reminder, three minutes, and name and address and any affiliation, please.
Thank you very much. President Klein, members of City Council, Chair Brown. My name is Joe Motil. I reside at 167 West Cook Road in Columbus. Once again, I remind you that this company has been around since 1935, as stated. It's one of the largest privately-held manufacturers of adhesives and sealants in the United States, and also has a plant in China. Estimated annual revenues are somewhere between $50 and $100 million. It's been on the cutting edge of developing wood adhesives, specialty polymers, pressure-sensitive adhesives for decades. Some of its products are even household names, and they are well-respected for their superior quality, and even specified by architects for use on many construction projects in this area. Franklin International claims, and I quote, "We solve technical problems. We devote an unusually high percentage of our resources to research and development." I have no doubt that this is one of the reasons for their continued success in this industry. And although this $508,000 10-year tax abatement and the previous $2.8 million tax payments dwarf in comparison to the Easton deal of $68 million, or the $12.8 million for Big Lots, or the $8.5 million for developer shift capital and wood operating companies, or even the $10.4 million for UPS, the question continues to be why? Why the handout? Because they are going to keep their 335 full-time employees and add five more jobs? Since they continue to do business and grow here in Columbus, are we really obligated to reward them? Because they want to continue performing research and development with a new onsite facility, because they are located in an enterprise zone? Why does this administration and City Council continue to grant across-the-board tax abatements to virtually any business, those who construct speculative warehouse space, developers of apartments, condominiums, and office space, regardless of the millions, if not billions, of dollars in profits that they record annually? Why do we continue to fatten the bottom lines on the backs of those who can least afford increased property taxes? Creating jobs, expanding one's company, and making money is all a part of doing business. It is not the role of city government to reward companies for their success and to compensate your campaign contributors who are building apartments and condominiums in the short north, the downtown, the near east side, and other thriving neighborhoods and areas of this city. And now is especially not the time, if ever, for granting tax abatements due to the reduced state funding for Columbus Public Schools and a probable 10-year tax levy request that will be on the ballot in November from the Franklin County Board of Developmental Disabilities that will add $107 per year per $100,000 of property value. There's also a need for increased property tax revenue to help with the Children's Services Board, that funds programs to help abused, neglected, and terrible children and their families, for senior services. And it is especially critical to make sure everyone is paying their fair share of property tax dollars to increase funding to the Adam H. Board that relies primarily on property tax and state funding, so they may efficiently fund the necessary resources and treatment for this city's opioid addiction epidemic. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Motil.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Motil. And you asked, or you mentioned, you know, the city's obligation, and I continue to believe that our obligation is to help create and retain good-paying jobs for our city. The economic development work that's done in Mr. Shoney's department and Director Shoney's department is a delicate balance between the competitiveness of our region, which is very high. So, I appreciate your comments, and continue to think that the city can balance our obligation for job creation with continued investment in very vital human services, which we do on a year-over-year basis. Director Shoney, is there anything else you want to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Klein, members of Council. I think you summarized the issues very well. The one thing that I would point out in addition is the location of this project. This is on Hosack, down on the south side, and we are really excited about whenever we have the opportunity to work with a homegrown company and help them really expand their offering of jobs and deepen their offering of jobs. So, putting in a research and development facility on the south side on Hosack, we think is something really important, and something the city should look to be involved in, and should look to make that a really strong decision for a company.
Thank you, Director Shoney. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. And I'd like to also, I have one item in education, which, if you can go back to page eight of your Consent Agenda, as I introduce this piece of legislation, I'd like to invite Ms. Tyena Jordan to the podium, please. And you're welcome to bring your guest, too, Mr. Jordan, if you'd like to accompany her. In education, tonight, we have ordinance 1673-2017, to authorize the Director of the Department of Education to enter into a contract with Columbus State Community College to provide an accelerated Child Development Associate Program to up to 100 preschool teachers who are already serving Columbus children, to help meet the mayor's goal that every four-year-old in Columbus should have access to a high-quality early childhood education, to help meet the state's goal that all early childhood education programs be step-up-to-quality rated by the year 2020, and to authorize the expenditure of $200,000 from the general fund. I'm very happy to present this ordinance for consideration before Council this evening. Mayor Ginther and Director Rhonda Johnson have focused on improving access to quality pre-K education in Columbus. This ordinance represents another step towards that goal. The quality of a child's education is directly linked to the quality of their classroom teacher. That is why we are establishing this partnership with Columbus State, to bring CDA training directly to teachers who are already in the classrooms throughout our community. I was able to visit the beginning of this program last fall, when we did this with teachers in Linden and on the south side, and we visited, I took my one-year-old at the time, we visited these classrooms during kickoff, and mostly women. There were a couple men in the room. Teachers came, they had already been teaching a full day of pre-K, and I'm sure we're tired. I know what it's like to, I was tired after a day with my one-year-old, and they were there, and they were committed to gaining this certification and improving the education they provide in classrooms. It is a wonderful thing that we can forge this partnership. So, to that end, I actually wanted to turn it over to my colleague, President Pro Tem, Priscilla Tyson, to introduce Tyena Jordan, who's here tonight, and a testament to the good work of these CDA programs.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Last Friday, and it was pouring down raining, if you were out this last Friday, but last Friday was the culmination of six months of training, eight hours per week, and as Councilmember Brown just mentioned, that individuals who are getting their Child Development Associate training for this certification program, that they were, this was the culmination of this six months of training. And it was a wonderful event. Director Johnson was there, and to be able to see the number, the individuals, the diversity of the individuals that were in Linden McKinley STEM High School, the academy now, it's called Academy, to be there, it was pretty amazing. There were a few men, but mostly women, many women of just diverse colors that were there. And just thinking about their work, and so Ms. Jordan was there, and I thought it was important for her to come down, because I don't know if people, when we were talking about six months of training, if they really do have a grasp of what that training consists of. And I thought that she had such an interesting way of sharing what her experience was going through this training, and I thought with Director Johnson, that since I knew legislation was going to be on, even though this is for Columbus State, this training was still action for children, that it would be important for our viewing and listening audience to kind of hear her experience in this training. The other thing I'll just say is this, when we're talking about workforce development, that we know the importance, if our children, the individuals who are in this training, who are focused on our early learners, to prepare our early learners to be able to go to kindergarten, ready to go to kindergarten, and then from kindergarten, get the skills that they continually, continue to need for them to be able to successfully move through elementary school, and this is all so important, then to middle school, then to high school, and then whether it's college, certification programs, whether it's service programs, whatever they choose to do, it really does start from those instructors in pre-K. And we should be so thankful for them, and certainly the diversity of the people that were there, so thankful to their work, to make sure that our kids are prepared for the work that Councilmember Brown just stated, under, for, you know, the economic development, for we're going to have a workforce ready, it starts with an individual like Ms. Jordan. And so, Ms. Jordan, I'm going to let the floor be yours, you can kind of share your experience, and then we'll come back, I want people, I want you also to share just about who you are and who's also standing next to you. Thank you.
Well, starting out, I'm a family childcare provider. Been about three years going on for, been in the daycare field about 15, 16 years, love children. Like Ms. Tyson stated, it's very important for kids to learn at an early age. Their brains start developing at six months, and from there on, they're taking in so much knowledge, little do we know. The jabbering they do, they're learning, they're talking. And, you know, my dream is to open up a daycare center. Like I said, I have one in my home, but I want to get a building and open up multiple daycare centers to keep the learning going and to keep it flowing. This is my father, Nathaniel Jordan, and, go ahead, you got it.
Nath would thank everyone for having my daughter here, because it's important. I'm trying to fight babies to live, infant mortality, get them to their first birthday so I can get them to my daughter, so she can teach them, okay? So, again, I want to thank the Council for recognizing, and if you want to give your talk here, and I thank you very much for having me.
And Nathaniel, I also want to say thank you to you, because he was just here a few months ago. He's part of the CAFA-FASI, and they're focusing on Fatherhood Matters, the ABCs of Safe Sleeping, and so just appreciate your work. I didn't realize this was your daughter until then you sent me something and said, oh, that's my daughter you talked to. I know her mom sent this in the back, and just want to say thank you for certainly your work there, and also being a role model for your daughter. And so now, Ms. Jordan, the floor is yours.
I will share my poem. It is titled "On The Way To My CDA. Oh, CDA, oh, CDA, how close we've become. We met when it was cold outside, and there was no sun. Our journey began with Module One, where I learned how to maintain a commitment to professionalism in order for a successful center to run. Moving on to Module Two, it taught me the principles of child development and how they learn. I now know while children are developing, there's going to be lots of twists and turns. Module Three showed me how to provide positive guidance. I'm using what I learned with my own children, remaining calm and displaying acts of kindness. Module Four showed me how to make my environment healthy and safe, so now I double-check all outlets, cords, and immediately fix anything that isn't in place. Module Five was my favorite module yet. Observing and recording children's behavior helped me know what I needed to plan next. It showed me what the children enjoy and what they can do. It also showed me what skills we may need to work on, too. Module Six, unfortunately, I can't say too much about. During this time, I was out of the country on vacation, taking a CDA drought. However, when I returned, I did get the last two classes in, and those classes taught me the steps to advance the physical and intellectual development within children. So, now I ensure I provide enough time for active play and exploration. I give them experiences that reflect the range of their cultural groups and different nations. Module Seven helped me prepare for any future complications. It gave me the strategies on how to maintain an effective program operation. Module Eight had me focused and engrossed. Establishing productive relationships with family is by far important the most. Throughout this entire journey, there were many times I wanted to give up. Going from work to class and back to work can be tough. I continuously asked myself, what am I doing? Why am I here? But after the first couple of weeks of class, it all became clear. There was so much more for me to learn and that I needed to adhere. My perseverance and love for this field is what put me afoot, but the knowledge I was receiving is what got me to stay put. I've met so many great people and gained so many new friends, but to be honest, if I had the chance, I probably wouldn't do it again. However, with that being said, I am extremely grateful to AFC for providing me with this extraordinary opportunity. To my classmates, I wish you all nothing but the best, good luck in your future endeavors and on passing your CDA test. Thank you.
Thank, Ms. Jordan, thank you again, and there were about 100 individuals who completed their coursework, and again, thank you. And just tell us a little about you. You're from Columbus, right? And what school you went to?
Yep, graduated from Brickhaven High School, played basketball, 35-years-old now. Went on to college, the Chicago State, Central State, got my associate's in physical education from- education from Columbus State before I decided to do the child development. I've been a teacher, I've been an administrator in daycares, and now, like I said, I just want to have my own, run my own center. Yep.
That's great.
Thank you for coming down, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jordan, thank you for your commitment to Columbus and yours too, Mr. Jordan. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, Pro Tem Tyson, thank you, President Klein, that's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee is Public Safety, it's chaired by Chair Brown. So Councilmember Mitch Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Public Safety, we have Ordinance 1908-2017 to authorize and direct the Finance and Management Director to issue a purchase order and associate all general budget reservations to Boundtree Medical LLC for the purchase of pharmaceutical supplies for the Division of Police to authorize the expenditure of $20,000 from Public Safety Initiative Fund and to declare an emergency. At this time, Assistant Director Collins, would you please provide an update on the historical aspect of the pilot program and where we're at currently?
Thank you, President Klein, members of council and Safety Chair Brown, I'm sorry, I can't do this in a poem like the last one, that's kind of hard to follow.
Yeah, do it in a poem.
Thank you for this, this is $20,000 to expand a program that started in June of 2015 that put naloxone in cruisers with volunteer, officers that volunteered to be trained and use it, it was a successful program. This will allow us to expand it beyond the two to three zip codes that we initially put this pilot program in, that was based upon the number of overdoses that the Columbus Division of Fire was seeing. This will also allow us to expand to fit some of the requirements that the opiate action plan has stated, that they would like naloxone in every cruiser in Franklin County. Just a couple statistics, during the pilot program, they admit, the Division of Police administered naloxone 58 times, and I believe all were successful except they did lose one person. And so far this year, there have been 85 administrations of naloxone to date. So it's sad that the numbers are that, to that point that we are going to require to expand this, but we think it's a life-saving drug that, as Assistant Chief Jim Davis says, gives people the ability to have the bridge to tomorrow. So thank you once again.
This legislation has been co-sponsored by President Klein, would you like to make any comments, sir? Hearing none, I think it's important for everyone to appreciate the fact that our law enforcement officers certainly have to deal with the very, very difficult issues on a day-to-day basis, but they took on the additional responsibility of issuing Narcan, formerly known as Nar- and naloxone. And I am woe only pleased and happy with the success that they have taken on, and as you heard from Assistant Director Collins, this is a volunteer effort on the part of the Columbus Police Division, and we all should be very proud. If there are no other further comments, I move for passage.
Clerk Colerole.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passes.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee is Public Service and Transportation, it's chaired by Councilmember Harden, Chair Harden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Public Service and Transportation, we have Ordinance 1723-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract agreement with Ohio Health to accept funding for project costs associated with the design and construction of public infrastructure improvements in the vicinity of North Broadway and Olin Tangi River Road, and to authorize the city auditor to appropriate the money received from Ohio Health to provide a refund to Ohio Health Corporation after the project activity and final accounting are complete, if necessary, and to declare it an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the Director of Public Service to enter into an agreement with and accept up to $5 million from the Ohio Health relative to the design and construction of the public infrastructure improvements in and around North Broadway and Olin Tangi River Road. Last year, this council passed Ordinance 2237-2016, which laid out an economic development agreement between the city and Ohio Health. Ohio Health pledged to bring more than 1,300 new non-seasonal jobs with an annual payroll of more than $75 million to the city. As part of the economic development agreement, the city is implementing infrastructure improvements around the North Broadway and Olin Tangi project site. Ohio Health is undertaking the design of the projects and is also expected to undertake the construction of some of the projects. However, it may be necessary for the city to administer certain activities, particularly inspections related to the design and construction of the projects, which will require upfront funding from Ohio Health. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Either Director, Director, no, no further, all right, if no further question or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk Colerole.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Next I have Ordinance 1740-2017 to amend the 2017 capital improvement budget to authorize, or to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to pay utility relocation costs to utilities as needed for the roadway improvements along Lizelle Road Phase A project, and to authorize expenditure of $1 million, or so much thereof as may be necessary, for utility relocations for this project from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund and the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. This phase of the Lizelle Road Improvement Project will, will from High to Plent, widen Lizelle to a three-lane road, including a center two-way left-turn lane, and will provide sidewalks on the south side of Lizelle Road, as well as a youth, a shared use path and on the north side, and a drainage system and lighting on both sides. In order to implement these changes, it is necessary to relocate some utilities. This project will be 80% funded by the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, or MORPC, through the Ohio Department of Transportation, with the City of Columbus paying the remaining 20% of the cost. The city's share of the utility relocation expense is $200,000, but the city must up front the entire cost of the utility relocations, but ultimately, ODOT will reimburse the city $800,000 of this $1 million. So if there are no questions or comments, we move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. If you will follow me back to page 11 in our agenda, from our consent agenda, I have Ordinance 1901-2017, which is to authorize and direct the Director of Public Service to transfer signature authority for all Smart City Child, excuse me, for all Smart City Challenge, Smart Columbus, and Paul G. Allen Family Foundation contracts, documents, projects, and past, present, and future to the city's chief innovation officer, excuse me, or the chief innovation officers designee, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance transfers signature authority from the Director of Public Service to the chief innovation officer. This is part of a larger restructuring within the Smart Columbus initiative, the implementation of Smart Columbus stretches beyond the confines of just the Public Service Department. So in order to restructure Smart Columbus to be an enterprise-wide initiative, we have, are moving, are shifting to an authority from the development level to the chief innovation officer. For administrative purposes, however, legislation will still continue to pass through the Department of Public Service. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passes.
That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee is Public Utilities, it's chaired by Councilmember Stenziano, Chair Stenziano, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Public Utilities, bring forward an Ordinance 1447-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a service contract with the Ohio Basement Authority for the Blueprint Clintonville Sump Pump Project Number Two, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,400,526 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, and to amend the 2017 capital improvements budget. The Department of Public Utilities is under consent decree from the Ohio EPA to eliminate sanitary sewer overflows and basement backups. Blueprint Clintonville Sump Pump Project Number Two is designed to reduce residential backups in these impacted areas. This work consists of installing sump pumps and other such work as may be necessary to complete the project. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is Ordinance 1477-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a planned modification with Ohio Mulch Supply, Inc. for services in connection with the Deep Row Hybrid Poplar Program for the Division of Sewage and Drainage, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,375,000 from the Sewage Systems Operating Fund. This contract originally authorized Ohio Mulch Supply Incorporated to remove a minimum of $27,000 and up to a maximum of $30,000 wet tons of biosolids annually from the, from our wastewater treatment facilities at Southerly and Jackson Pike to reuse to grow trees at the New Lexington Tree Farm in Perry Township, Ohio. The biosolids will be utilized as a nitrogen source to grow hybrid poplar trees, which will later be harvested for mulch. Last week in between the raindrops, my team, the staff and I had a chance to tour the Jackson Pike wastewater facility and got to see it in action, which isn't as exciting as it sounds, and definitely, you can smell it before you see it. If there are any questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is Ordinance 1536-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with John Aramo and Sons for the Blueprint Clintonville Blenheim-Glenco Integrated Solution and Acton Road Area Water Line Improvements Project, to authorize appropriations and transfers from the Sanitary Sewer and Water Reserve Funds to the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund and the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund, respectively. To authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize an expenditure of up to $9,510,936 for the Division of Sewage and Drainage, to authorize an expenditure of up to $3,607,580 for the Division of Water, to authorize an expenditure of up to $503,013 from the Department of Public Service, and to amend the 2017 capital improvements budget. This is a joint project between the Department of Public Utilities and the Department of Public Service. Work under the project consists of construction of 183 bio-retention basin rain gardens in a stormwater wetland to store and treat stormwater runoff, again, as part of the city's consent decree with the Ohio EPA. We will also be replacing or rehabilitating water mains and resurfacing pavement, placing curbs and curb ramps on Acton Road from High Street to Indianola Avenue. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is Ordinance 1693-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and increase the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with CH2M Hill Engineers, Incorporated for the Dublin Road Water Plant Treatment Capacity Increase Project for the Division of Water, and to authorize an expenditure of up to $3,400,000 within the Water General Obligations Bond Fund. This is the seventh modification for this agreement, it provides funding to continue engineering services during construction, including performing site visits to determine if work is proceeding in accordance with the contract documents, submittal review, responding to contractors' requests for information, and preparation of reward drawings, et cetera. This modification is anticipated to fund these services through third quarter 2018. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And finally, bring Ordinance 1735-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Kokozin Industrial, Incorporated for the Chemically Enhanced Primary Treatment, Eliminary Treatment Project at Southerly Wastewater Treatment Plant, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $25,604,141 from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund, and to authorize expenditure of up to $25,604,141 from said loan fund to the Division of Sewage and Drainage and declare an emergency. This project, approved by the Ohio EPA, will provide additional wastewater treatment plant capacity to treat wet weather flows in excess of 330 million gallons daily at Southerly Wastewater Treatment Plant. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk Colerole.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passes.
That's all I have in my committees tonight, President Klein.
Thank you, Chair Stenziano. We have one final committee, it's the Rules and Reference Committee, I chair that committee. Tonight, we have an ordinance before us for proposed charter amendment number one to city council, and we're going to be tabling it for one week, I know Councilmember Harden has been running point on this for the city and city council, so we do have speakers, which we will allow after the tabling, so can I get a motion to table this for one week? 1868, 2017, motion to table one week has been moved and seconded, clerk Colerole.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation tabled, we do have three speakers against it, which we will accept. The first speaker is Jonathan Beard. State your name and organizations you represent, you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is John Beard with Everyday People for Positive Change, my address 1815 Franklin Park South. The year is 2017, it's, I count, I think 52 years after the Voting Rights Act of 1965 was passed, okay? We're here debating the crux of the Voting Rights Act, the highlight of the civil rights movement, which is Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act ensured that in Columbus, it's going to be black folk, have equal rights to vote, that our votes cannot be diluted in a majority pool of voters. Now here you are, trying to rethink 50 years of federal policy by setting up this ridiculous situation where we have nine council districts, one of which would have to be black, at least one of which would have to be black, but all subject to the white majority voting. What's wrong with you guys? This has been decided, our parents fought and won this battle, it doesn't need to be up for consideration again. You're trying to subsume our rights, our voting rights to the white majority, that has been decided, that's not an issue anymore. Essentially, you're sitting up there and saying, you're going to pass this thing and so sue us, okay? You know what the law says, the law is clear, you're setting up a structure that's designed to fail, this doesn't make any sense. You know, I look up here and I see four black city council members, y'all should be ashamed of yourselves, okay? Every council member should, but you as well, you mostly. We look at you and we think you should at least protect our interests, the most fundamental of those is our voting interests, okay? Section 2 was decided and defined by the Supreme Court of the United States as a restatement of the 14th Amendment of the Constitution, a restatement of the equal protection clause. You guys are up here tinkering with that, y'all should be ashamed of yourselves. You shouldn't be tabling this resolution because that means you can bring it up, we know you want to do it, I mean, this was your, this was your baby, you and the mayor put this together, you put it in front of the Citizens Commission, they approved it, you refined it in the Rules and Reference Committee, and now you want to vote on it. This does not deserve a vote, it does not deserve a tabling, it deserves to be voted down and put back in the dustbins of history, y'all should be ashamed of yourself. I just ask, you know, I've sent requests for people to respond to, you know, I've raised this issue for a month now, I've had two responses, both respondents said they don't have a problem with it, and I'm interested, does any other city council member have a thought on this This is truly shameful.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Beard? Our next speaker is Willis Brown. Mr. Brown, if you could state your name and the organizations you represent, you have three minutes.
Yes, Willis Brown, president of Bronson Neighborhood Association. You know, last year when we presented this in issue one, and you spent a lot of time and effort to go around telling people, oh, well, you know, if this passed, you would have less African-Americans represented on council, James Ragland went around and confused the people. And I don't see how, again, that instead of working with us, we've asked to sit down and talk with you, and now you're coming up with nine districts and then have it be voted on citywide. How does that make sense? You know, someone is going to represent you as a constituent, I am a city, the Democratic Ward Seven Central Committee representative, so I represent that district. So how can, if that was the case, I should be voted on by everyone in the whole city. So how can someone represent a constituent and someone up north is voting on me or someone in my area? As council people, I mean, we, the only city that still has this at-large system, why do you keep trying to preserve it? It is outdated. Well, you, the seven of y'all cannot even reach everyone. Why not sit down with us and let us come up with a plan that works for everyone? This is not working, all it does is, it shows that you don't know what you're doing, or you, and no, I can say you know what you're doing, is that you're keeping the power in the hands of a few. I can't, I can't see how this council can keep promoting the fact that, one, that we can be selected in our area and then have someone up can be selected in our area and then have someone up north vote for me in my area. We couldn't even get support from this council to save the Adelphi Savings Bank. Now, you think if we had someone that represented our area that that would have happened? That you sit down and you let your own history be just eradicated? That the children who are not born yet would not know how great they were before by letting that Adelphi bank be pushed in the ground? There's nothing there but an old raggedy garage. But yet, you tell us, and Ragland went around to let everyone, you have support. You have seven people. Not one of you stood up, and we had a meeting with City Councilmember Fortem Tyson, but the building still came down. History, that you allow your own, it ain't mine, I'm, again, I'm from Harlem. It's your own history. You let be eradicated. So now you're doing the same thing with the vote, same thing with representation. I can't understand that. How can today we have educated people doing ignorant things? The vote is important. Representation is important. And yet, you keep denying the people proper representation and voting on the people who live in that community, who are there. And I mean, whoever's pushing that, you know, it's awful, but you keep doing it. So we have to keep fighting you and fighting you and defending what is already ours. And y'all seem to like that. I don't understand that. As council members, you say you represent us, but you don't. So we need to table it indefinitely.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Brown? Our final speaker is Joe Motil. Mr. Motil, you were here previously, but if you could restate your name, your address, any organizations you represent.
President Klein, members of City Council, Joe Motil, 167 West Cook Road, Columbus. How this handpicked Charter Review Committee of camp followers and a city staff of loyal collaborators ever came up with such an inconceivable recommendation is beyond me and any reasonable person who's researched truly combined district-at-large, city council forms of government that are present in nearly every large city in the United States. This proposal in its current form does absolutely nothing to address real neighborhood and district representation for people who are sick and tired of an at-large system that was created in 1914 by the Anglo-Irish white businessman that desired to silence a bunch of Germans, Italians, Poles, African-Americans, and others from having any input in city policy. Even the city of Columbus's law director at that time stated, and I quote, "The laboring men will not be benefited or represented in a council of seven men elected at large, four of whom at least will be corporation-handpicked and will vote as the corporations dictate as against the interest of the men who work." This dominance of power has continued for over 100 years, as evidenced by a recently published document from the Harvard Business School stating that prominent business leader, John W. Wolf, asked Les Wexner in the late 1980s, quote, "If he wanted to join him as one of three or four people who decides what happens in this town, like who's mayor and where the highways go," end of quote. This marked the beginning of the Columbus partnership. Since the corporate takeover by the partnership, developers, lobbyists, and others, members of City Council have used this office through an appointment process as a training facility for new upcoming political players whose loyalty is to that of the mayor, council president, and campaign contributors, and not is what in the best interest of all people in this city. Councilman Harden was quoted as saying that the Charter Review Committee had two goals: How can we make city government more transparent and accountable? The only thing that is more transparent to myself and thousands of others is how this ordinance will increase the current at-large system from seven to nine members because, as stated, this ordinance allows for the entire city to vote on every district. Instead of votes of seven to zero on legislation, they will be nine to zero. The signature requirement should have been lowered and campaign finance restrictions should have been included in this ordinance as well. This expanded at-large system continues to dilute the voting power of blacks and is clearly discriminatory due to the overwhelmingly white population of Columbus deciding who will represent the predominant black neighborhoods in this city. Without a true district-at-large, nothing changes. It only gets worse. I strongly urge you, as others, to reject this ordinance once and for all, please. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Motil? No questions or comments? Any comments from my colleagues before we adjourn and go to zoning? I'm sorry, we do have 10 minutes before zoning and a couple of non-agenda speakers. President Protem Tyson?
Thank you, President Klein. Just want to, you know, share, just another, I waited until all three speakers had the opportunity to come to the podium, and just want to always clarify, you know, what conversations we've had. And so, and I also just want to step back and say that, certainly recognize the fact that a committee certainly worked together to be able to present recommendations to us. And we've accepted those recommendations, and certainly, we've just said that we have, we are going to not vote on those recommendations this evening, and we'll vote on them or not vote on them. We don't know what we're, you know, obviously, they've been put on, we put them on hold, and so for whether it's next week or whenever we're going to put that on, if we put it on. So, but what I just want to mention that, you know, a couple of things, and I know that people are really concerned about this proposal, but I also want to recommend, just share that, remember that people voted, you know, have voted numerous times on whether we should be in that large system or where we should be a district system. People have voted on it. And whether or not we like how the people voted, people did vote on it. That's number one. But I also want to make sure that, I did meet with Jonathan Beard, I think one of my other colleagues did, and certainly, Mr. Beard, I didn't say one way or another how I was going, what my support was. I listened to what you had to say. And so I didn't say we had a problem with it or didn't have a problem with it. I listened, I just listened to your comments. And I also shared that if, that we need to also look at all the facts, which is what the Legal Defense Fund says in regards to legal, looking at the Legal Defense Fund but looking at the Voter Rights Act. So we did have that conversation. So I just want to make that's clear. I also want to make sure that the comment came up about the Adelphi Savings Bank. And certainly, I had a number of meetings with Mr. Willis Brown. I see Kathleen Bailey in the chambers. I also had, you know, I've met with a number of times in regard to the building on Long Street. And during that period, it was made very clear that that building was going to come down, and we were going to save the front of that building to be used in the development of that building. So I do appreciate you coming, having meetings and coming down and having conversations. I recognize the fact that sometimes we, like I said, in regards to the building, you may, people, you may have wanted the building to stand as well, you know what the condition the building was in, and certainly the front of that building, because we do recognize the importance of the African-American bank that certainly used to also have city funds. But I, I understand, and by listening to what, you know, the issues, the issues and concerns are that you have come up and you have spoken to this group about. And I would just ask that, you know, you give us an opportunity, again, we were giving a proposal by a commission, and we will have to then look at that proposal and determine where we stand on that proposal. Thank you.
No, you cannot. Councilmember Harden? Councilmember?
Thank you, President Klein, and thank you, President Protem, Priscilla Tyson, for those comments. As a reminder, as we remember how we got here, last year, there was a ballot initiative that was brought to Columbus voters about changing how we govern ourselves as a council. During that campaign, I stepped up, the mayor stepped up, we stepped up and said that we didn't think that this was the best way, that that ballot initiative was the best way to have a conversation about change, that we should bring folks together in the Columbus way, that we should have an open conversations about how we move forward. A conversation about how we, as a city, are governed and the structure of governance is the most important conversation that a city can have, and it's our responsibility to make sure that those conversations are as inclusive as possible. Now, we put together this Charter Review Committee last year. They met, I think, eight or nine times. They met on each side of town, in community centers and rec centers, heard from a diverse group of folks, many of you who spoke tonight, they heard from you, and your comments are encapsulated in the report that was given to council. Now, our job is to take what the Charter Review, or my, how I view it, is that we take what the Charter Review Committee has presented to council and to put it back in front of the voters, who should have and will have the final say on how we, as a city, are governed. That is the promise that I think that I made last year as we started this process. I certainly appreciate the confidence of this council to allow me to be a part of this conversation and to have it. I certainly appreciate the Charter Review Committee, who set out, sat and had these conversations and who presented us this list of recommendations, that they say are based off of evidence-based processes. And so, look forward to bringing it before council and asking my colleagues to support it. Thank you, President Klein.
Any other questions or comments before we adjourn? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned. We do have two non-agenda speakers, which we were going to take prior to moving into zoning. The first is Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. Will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. All members serve on the committee. Chair Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Before beginning our zoning agenda, I'll just briefly explain the rules of council. We allow three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes on each side, and we will provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. I swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Thank you. You may be seated. Variance 1778-2017. To grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 335603, permitted uses 331128b requirements, 331249, minimum number of parking spaces required, and 332105b1, vision clearance of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 2365 West Dublin Granville Road 43235 to permit a brewery with reduced development standards in the LC4 Limited Commercial District. The applicant is Random Precision Brewing Company, LLC. The proposed use is a brewery with off-site distribution and taproom. The city department's recommendation is approval. Northwest Civic Association's recommendation is approval. Are there any additional comments from staff? Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? We do have a request from the applicant to amend this variance to emergency. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Thank you. If you could please come to the podium and to speak briefly about the emergency request. And thank you for coming to council.
Thank you for your time this evening. I'll be relatively quick. The request for the emergency is just simply a time issue. The longer it takes for us to be open, the longer it takes to make the product. We're having rent expenses at this point without any income coming in, and for a small business trying to get off his feet, those rent checks are big chunks of money that are going out pretty quickly, and to wait another 30 days holds up construction, it holds up the federal and state permits that I have to get as well for the business. So hopefully, the council looks upon it with good favor that the emergency request be granted. I don't know if there's any questions from anyone.
Thank you. If you could please state your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Jason Graeble.
Thank you. I don't believe there are any questions. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
I would first like to move to amend this variance to emergency.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
I would now like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
1780-2017. To grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 335603, C4, permitted uses 332105, vision clearance, and 335611, C4, district setback lines of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1397 North Grant Avenue 43201, to permit single-unit dwellings with reduced development standards in the C4 commercial district. The applicant is Wineland Park Development, LLC. The proposed use is single-unit dwellings. The city department's recommendation is approval. University Area Commission's recommendation is approval. Are there any additional comments from staff? Any questions from my colleagues for staff? Is the applicant present and would like to make any additional comments? Thank you, Mr. Perry. I would now like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
1782-2017. To rezone 6091 Cleveland Avenue 43231, being approximately 4.47 acres located on the west side of Cleveland Avenue, approximately 133 feet north of DeWitt Drive, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to LC4 Limited Commercial District. The applicant is Vertical Bridge Development 2, LLC. The proposed use is a monopole telecommunications antenna and limited commercial development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Northland Community Council's recommendation is approval. Are there any additional comments from staff? Any questions for staff? There is one speaker speaking for this variance, Mr. Paul Newland. If you could please come down to the podium. Thank you for joining us this evening. And again, you have three minutes. If you could let us, again, know your name and any organizations you're representing.
Good evening. My name is Paul Newland. I'm for this variance because for the past several years, I lived right across the street from it, and those woods come straight into my home. And what the variance was before, what the code was before, was that they could put multi-office complex there. Well, the road through the blueprints came straight out in front of my house. So in order for that, for me to prevent that, I purchased a part of that land. So I purchased a half an acre of that land which faces right in front of my house. You're going to be approving a zoning for 4.7, 4.47 acres. Well, I own 5.4 acres there. So if you're going to approve it for that portion, I just hope we're not going to spot zone it and not approve the whole thing. I have pictures and diagrams of everything that it is, so I would like to leave that with you so you can take a deeper look into it. I have no complaints about the communication tower that's going to be going off. They've been great neighbors, but my complaint is, again, if you're going to zone it C4, what am I going to do with my half an acre that's left there in front of my home? So sometimes, common sense makes a lot of sense. And if we use it here, we would zone the whole thing C4 because it's only a portion of the land. There's nothing else around it other than the front of my house, as I am to you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Newland. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Mr. Newland, I would like to suggest to you that you reach out to our zoning department and ask, Ms. Shannon Pine is here. If you have further questions or concern about, like, the zoning of your property and the zoning of the property beside you.
Well, the only other question I would have would be, what would happen to my property? Would it still be zoned for me to put a multi-business unit there?
Shannon, Ms. Pine, I'm sorry.
Yes. Good evening, members of council, Councilmember Klein, or President Klein and Councilmember Page. This zoning, it was interesting because it was a commercial plan development, and you are right, sir, it did have a specific development plan. It was intended to be an office subdivision with a street that ran through. In probably about 2005, there was a piece of it zoned out. So this CPD was already rendered defunct back then. And when this tract came in, all of these parcels were under the same ownership, so we allowed it to proceed. We can't basically prevent a property owner from zoning their property, and in this case, since it was already defunct, we knew that the portion that was left was going to be a residual part of the Commercial Plan Development District. So that zoning will remain, and until you decide what you want to do with it, you will have to do the will remain. And until you decide what you want to do with it, you will have to do the same thing and rezone your property. But we couldn't force this particular applicant to add this tract because they didn't have control of it, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Ms. Pine, and thank you for coming down, Mr. Newland. Is the applicant present and would like to make any additional comments? Are there any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I would like to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all we have in zoning, President Klein.
Thank you, Chair Page. Any other business to come before zoning and regular meeting number 38? Seeing none, I'm sorry, seeing none. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Stand adjourned.